Our colleagues on Zoom?
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you very much. So before we actually convene the committee of the whole meeting tonight, we have some very patient special guests who've been in the audience waiting for us, and those are our student representatives who've been here serving us and representing their respective high schools throughout this school year. Each year, we select an amazing group of high schoolers who are willing to serve as representatives to both the school board, the Human Relations Commission within the city of Allentown. And once a month, students sit alongside of us to discuss various issues and take action on important topics that affect ASD. This experience building not only their student leadership capabilities, but they begin to develop the civic engagement skills that we all need as well. To be selected, students had to apply by submitting an application along with an essay as to why they are interested in serving. And to round out the selection process, students were interviewed by both central office and school administrators, as well as school board members. And students, we want to recognize your steadfast commitment and dedication on behalf of the Board of Directors. We want to say thank you. And I know we started the beginning of the year with your principals in introducing you and telling us a little bit about you and why you were selected, but I want to give them the opportunity to come up and tell us a little more about those students if they'd like. So I know we have Mr. McCool here, I don't have my glasses on. We have Mr. McCool and Mr. Fritz. So we'll go alphabetically, Dera first, Mr. McCool.
Good evening. It's always an honor to be here to speak to you, thank you. I'm honored especially to come before you and always honor students. I'll begin by introducing, by now, most of you have known them. Ms. Nasheera Brown, Nasheera. You may know her, she has a relative on the school board. Looks just like her. This lovely young lady, I'm very proud to say is an early college graduate, soon to be graduate, graduate completer. And she's also in seven days going to be, eight days going to be a high school graduate. So big ups to her on completing both. She is on her way to Tennessee State University. She's going to be majoring in political science with an emphasis in government and a minor in pre-law, hopefully. And I know that she's going to be back in Lehigh Valley. She's always been a staunch advocate for the voice of young people in the Lehigh Valley, and she will continue that work on her to bigger and better things. So ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Nasheera Brown.
Thank you, Nasheera.
The next student I want to honor is this young but large young man, please come over here. This young man, his name is Greg Soto Jr. I don't know where to start with the accolades that this young man has accomplished and achieved in his four-year career as a high school student. The freshest on my mind is, most recently today, delivered a Troika Award to his home. He was recognized in receiving the principal's award for outstanding achievement at Dura High School. This is one of our highest Troika awards. He also received the school board representative award. He was unanimously selected by the coaches at Dura High School and approved by me to receive the highest athletic award that we offer, the Kisco Award. So he has joined a lineage of historical figures at Lewis D. Dura High School. He is on to Wilkes University to major in civil engineering, and he will be representing us next week at the McDonald's All-Star Game, playing football, wearing the Husky helmet. I couldn't be more proud of this young man. He ranks in the top 10, and he's on to bigger and better things as well. Ladies and gentlemen, Greg Soto. That's what we have tonight.
Thank you both very much for your service. I have gotten to know both of you in different capacities, as I'm sure my colleagues have, and I really want to thank you for being leaders and role models in ASD.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Mr. Fritz, I'm the acting principal at William Allen High School. I want to take the time to call up one of our representatives, Finley Santana. Finley, in a couple of days as well, will be graduating. She is a senior and she is going to East Stroudsburg University. Do you have a major decided yet? Criminal justice, okay. Finley has been great involved in multiple things this year, especially, you know, her operations with the panel here, but also inside Allentown and meeting with other pivotable people within different divisions of the city of Allentown here. Would you like to say anything to the board? You don't have to, I'm putting you on the spot.
Mostly, I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here and learn from all of you. I hope that whatever I have learned from when I just sit down and listen quiet that I can take with me to East Stroudsburg and further beyond. Thank you again.
Thank you, Finley. I'll keep it with the seniors, who will be graduating next up, Sally Ma. So we're excited for Sally, who is also graduating in a couple of days, and she is going to Lehigh University here in, here at Bethlehem, correct? And do you have a major decided yet? Industrial and systems engineering. Wow, would you like to address the board, say a few words? You don't have to. This is about you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I've learned a lot this year from everyone here. And as a senior at Allen, I've learned a lot from both Mr. Fritz and Mrs. Singer that I've came here today, and thank you.
And we also have Jamir Chapman, who will be a junior next year. Many of you probably know Jamir, he has an absolute voice for anything speaking, so I'm going to allow him to say something, address the board. Like I said, he is already interested and committed to continuing and serving in his role next year, so we are excited about that, and we thank him for his service. Go ahead, Jamir.
Well, to thank everybody who's in this room and who has continued to come to the meetings, I've learned a lot from every single one of you people in here, and I'm just excited for the next year. And what's to come?
And I do want to take a brief moment just to recognize our other students who were involved, but unable to make it tonight. Lindsay Gaddis, Shane Resnick, and Dayana Roberts, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fritz. And I say to you students as well, thank you for your commitment to ASD and your participation with the school board and and your activities and leadership within the school. And it had been our hope to be able to have dinner with you all during the last meeting, and unfortunately, it didn't work out. There was a lot going on through ASD that because you're all very busy. So not everyone was able to join us, and subsequently, we weren't able to join you this evening. So I hope you had a great time meeting a lot of the folks that are sitting to the left over there, and just know that we were with you in spirit while we were upstairs. And again, thank you, and we wish you the best, and enjoy your summer. All right. That brings us to official business. So as you have made note, a couple of our colleagues are on Zoom, so I'll be chairing both policy and education this evening. So I'd like to call to order the Policy Committee of the Whole, for the Board of Directors for the School District for the City of Allentown for today, June 9th, 2022. Prior to tonight's meeting, excuse me, an executive session was held to discuss confidential and legal matters. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda or non-agenda items, and the first opportunity for comments at the beginning of the meeting is limited, excuse me, to agenda items only. If you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to Harriet Risticazy and sitting at the edge of the white table. Once the comment cards are located at the podium near the door, and once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, actually, your city of residence for the record, and kindly limit your remarks to three minutes. Do we have any comments? No comments? All right, at this point then, I will turn it over. Dr. Stanford, you have any remarks?
Thank you, Madam President, I do. On January 1st, 1863, President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. The document proclaimed that all slaves in the Confederate states of the United States were now free. But the reality was much different. The proclamation only applied to the states under Confederate control. It did not apply to slaveholding border states or areas controlled by the Confederacy. It also meant that those states and authorities would have to comply with the proclamation, which they did not at that time. On June 19th, 1865, Union soldiers arrived in the city of Galveston, Texas. The African-Americans in the city were still enslaved, however. This day, June 19th, marks what is considered the official end to the Southern chattel slavery system in the United States. The next year, on June 19th, the first official Juneteenth celebration was held in Texas. Last year, the day was finally made a national holiday. Last year, the day was finally made a national holiday. The Allentown celebration of this historic day will be celebrated on June 19th, which is Father's Day, at Cedar Beach Park. June is also National African-American Music Appreciation Month. Also this month, on June 28th, 1969, the gay community in New York City was sick and tired of being sick and tired. Members of the community that supported human rights and gay liberation spontaneously joined forces on that day to protest a police raid that began in the early morning hours at the Stonewall Inn in Greenwich Village. The protests became violent when the police used force to break up the protesters, but the people fought back. In honor of the efforts that day and the ongoing efforts to achieve equality for all human beings, we now celebrate National Pride Month every June. Tonight, I am wearing a button that I received at the Allen High School Canary Community Day this past Tuesday night to honor the sacrifices and this national observance of human rights. So please join our district as we go forward in this month in honoring the sacrifices and the historic significance of all three celebrations this month. Juneteenth, National, um, African-American Music Month, and, um, uh, National Pride Month. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Stanford. I realize I went out of order, but we have no cards, correct? We still have no cards. Okay. Um, well, that brings us to our order of business, um, which is we have one item for today. I'm Ms. Pollak. Thank you.
Good evening. The item is Policy 246, School Wellness, and the purpose of this policy is to recognize that student wellness and proper nutrition are related to students' physical well-being, growth, development, and readiness to learn. The policy language is revised to more clearly indicate who is responsible for ensuring the district guidelines are compliant with the Child Nutrition Act and School Lunch Act and reporting. Language was added to clarify the district's responsibility to retain records documenting compliance with the requirements of the school wellness policy necessary for PDE's administrative review. Language on the Wellness Committee's responsibilities were updated. Language was added on accessible drinking water in accordance with law, and language was also added in the section of the policy pertaining to non-sold competitive foods per PDE requirements. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing and hearing none, may I have a motion to move Policy 2, thank you. Is there a second, Mr. Thiel? It's seconded by Mr. Miller. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a question, a discussion part of it. I saw what it said, lifestyle practices. And one of the things that I'm really concerned about is our recess. And I wanted to make sure that every child receives recess, recess is not taken from them as a punishment, and that, you know, that is a given standard. And if it is not, my question is this. What is the consequences of children being not, not being able to have their recess, or, you know, someone not complying to this?
Once the policy is developed, we will be developing the administrative regulations. This week, we met with the Wellness Committee, and this actually came up as part of the discussion. And the interesting part was that one of our elementary students was present in the meeting and gave their feedback about recess. So we had decided as a committee that once the policy is adopted, we'll come up with what the regs or the protocols look like for that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are we going to also look at the time as well? Time for recess? The minutes, like two minutes?
In the process of reviewing the minutes and the schedule as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Thank you, Ms. Pollak. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The guys have it. At this time, we'll take public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comment cards on non-agenda, non-agenda items?
I have no comment cards.
No comment cards at all. Okay. Again, that brings us to old business. Is there any old policy business to come before the board? Any new business, policy related to come before the board? May I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Thiel, is there a second? Ms. Brown, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any posts? I think so. I'll move on to education, correct? I'm going to need to share. Okay. All right. That is adjourned. We are now moving on to the Education Committee of the Whole Meeting. Um, again, we're calling to order the Education Committee of the Whole for the Board of Directors for the School District for the City of Allentown for today, June 9th, 2022. Um, same procedure for public comment. If we have any, if you have any agenda items, please make sure to give them to Mr. Risticazian, um, and he will get them to the Board Secretary. Any superintendent remarks?
Madam President, I do not have any remarks.
All right. Do you have any? Still no comment cards. Okay. So that brings us to agenda item number one, and that would be Ms. Smith and Mr. Sang for CSI and ATS I School Improvement.
Good evening. Tonight, we're requesting the board's approval of our comprehensive support improvement plans for Harrison Morton Middle School, Rob Middle School, South Mountain Middle School, and Trexler Middle School, and our additional targeted support improvement plans for Allen High School and Deerife High School. Um, these plans need to be submitted by the end of June.
Okay. PowerPoint, please.
Thank you. Next slide. We wanted to remind the board of what school improvement in ASD looks like. We have four different designations for school improvement. We have CSI schools, which are the bottom 5% of our Title I schools. We have ATS I schools, which are, um, identified based on student group data. We have targeted support and improvement schools, um, which are based on student group data meeting state criteria and are non-designated schools. You will see TSI and non-designated in August. Today, we're focused on CSI and ATS I schools. Next slide, please. Part of the school improvement planning process are self-assessments, root cause analysis, goals and strategies, and then that action plan. Remember, our action plans are always based on our evidence-based strategies. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sang.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so we have, um, some slides as far as the overview of our middle school CSI plans. Um, the next slide, please. Uh, you have some information here as far as the planning process, self-assessment, and the stakeholder input and data sources that we use across the collective of the four middle schools. Uh, on the following slide. This details, um, the four areas that we have set goals, um, benchmarks, and action steps to improve in ELA math, uh, English language, growth and attainment, as well as culture and climate. Um, so our schools set attainable, uh, yet ambitious goals focused on outcomes, um, where the progress is measurable, and it's focused on student impact. So as we transition to the next slide, our academic CSI goals. We have all four of our schools aiming to improve their star math benchmarks by 11.6% from the baseline that they took in September through the end of year star assessment they took in May. Uh, a similar process is undertaken for ELA, uh, with an 8.3, uh, goal for improvement in proficiency. We also are using loss links to track our students', um, expected growth, uh, in their English language attainment. And our schools are looking to have a 15% increase in students meeting that expected growth. Each of our four schools creates a personalized culture and climate scorecard, where there's different ratings as far as they're, uh, meeting their benchmarks. And some of the examples around those goals include student attendance, alternate to suspension decreases, out-of-school suspension decreases, and student experiences as far as the data associated with our, uh, survey results. Our action steps look to focus on job embedded professional development. We conduct formative assessments with our English learners to determine, to determine which students need additional support and focus interventions. We've, uh, come a long way as far as our middle school teams, as far as our collaboration. Uh, we've instituted, uh, regular check-ins across all of our schools for our principals, for our assistant principals, for our supervisors of instruction, and for our English language supervisor of instruction. Uh, we also have support of transformation partners, um, assisting with that job embedded coaching. In school climate, we have the evidence-based strategy of restorative practices. And, uh, we have highlights there as far as our consistency in implementing restorative practices, the refinement of our climate systems and structures, the implementation of our PBIS components, and intentional family and engagement involvement.
Back to our ATS I planning, both schools have set their goals in two different priority areas. The first is academics, and the second one is school climate. Both goals are focused on star data and increasing from the benchmark, and each school's L-growth and attainment is aligned to expected growth based on loss link's assessment. And all schools share the same two school climate goals, and each building has one that is separate. We will be monitoring goals quarterly. Student group data will also be monitored quarterly, and schools will monitor that how many students need to move into proficiency to meet their goals. Next slide. Our goals for academics are for reading and ELA are to increase 12%. And our language acquisition is to increase 15% from the expected growth. For school climate, we are looking at attendance with a 15% increase from the 21-22 school year. And we also have a social emotional goal, um, to monitor, and that has two different parts. Schools are going to be monitoring to that during the cell lessons, so they're going to have dedicated time to teach social emotional learning lessons in their classrooms, and during walkthroughs at identified times, they're expecting to see 100% of classrooms completing those lessons. But in addition to that, we're looking to see 90% of high evidence of the social emotional practices during our walkthroughs. So we have not only the actual, but also the implementation of the strategies. Next slide, please. Our action plans, our evidence-based strategies for academics, is using student achievement data to support instructional decision-making. We'll be looking at data analysis and training, instructional planning by departments, sharing data with students, walkthrough cycles, and quarterly reports to faculties on ATS I plans. The school climate data is our evidence-based strategy is enhancing students' social emotional learning, school-based, universal interventions. We'll be looking at creation of a, uh, climate team, so consistency in teaching those social emotional lessons, trauma-informed practices, and calming corners professional development. The major emphasis is collaboration between departments and teachers and administrators within both of these action plans. Next slide, and that is the end of the slides. Again, these do need to be submitted by June 30th. We do have our, um, four middle school principals and our two high school principals here, as well as Eric Black from the IU who supports our ATS I schools. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Hold on, Ms. Harris.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, Mr. Sang. Um, appreciate all the work you and the team have done putting this together. I had one question. Uh, given the last two years with COVID, um, and it's a kind of a data question, right? Um, that's created a different bit of a baseline. So how did you take that into account while creating these goals? You know, moving into the 22-23 year, considering learning loss with COVID.
One of the major things that we have done, um, pre-COVID, we focused on a proficiency score on PSSAs or on keystones based on the previous year. We have switched that and are looking at from our baseline tests that we give in September, the growth that will be happening from September to June. Um, so it's not, so it's based on
Got it.
A score that we start with, and moving forward from there, not on a projected score where we should have been.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Okay, with the, um, the trauma-informed practices, wh-what are they going to look like?
Well, the first start, Ms. Harris, is to start with professional development for our staff. So that is the calming corners. That is the social one, that's the establish of the climate team, and that's the, um, social emotional lessons. Um, Ms. Pollak's team has been, um, uh, sorry, your name flashed up, Ms. Harriet Harrison. I was expecting your name to be a huge pop-up as well. Ms. Pollak's team did speak with us as we were developing those, uh, those action plans. So the very first part is the professional development of it. Um, I don't know if I answered your question.
Uh, you did, but I, I'm, I'm concerned about the trauma-informed, you know, um, with our practices, because our children have gone through 2020, 2021. COVID took a, a toll on our students and our staff. Are we going to be doing anything for our staff as well, you're doing with the children right now, but?
We are. Um, one of the main things is that social emotional lessons that will be taught, that the schools are identifying that they will be teaching on a on a consistent basis at a certain period. All of that is based on our climate data, which showed that the so- social and emotional learning was one of the highest areas that we needed to address.
Can I add to that as? I'd like to also add that, um, you know, uh, the team is also working on, uh, pulling together a framework that will bring alignment and coherence uh, to the, um, implementation of, um, a, um, a plan around positive, uh, behavior intervention supports, trauma-informed practices, uh, social emotional learning practices, and restorative practices. And we're working with, uh, outside, um, organizations to help us pull that plan together.
Thank you.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Mr. Palmer?
I just had a couple. Um, I saw that there was a plan to reduce the suspensions and detentions. Um, can you dive a little more into that?
Um, for our middle schools, um, those, uh, specific goals and what each, uh, school is striving to attain are on the full plans, um, which are on the website. Um, each school has individual goals on a scorecard, so, um, it'd look like a grid, and you can score anywhere from zero to five points across those three categories. Um, the baseline would be comparison of data to the year prior, um, and then based on historical data of the amount of whether it be out-of-school suspensions, in-school suspensions, whether it be attendance data, we would set our, uh, benchmarks to improve those gradually over the course of a year to hit our end-of-year benchmark. So if you wanted any, uh, specific data or specific schools, uh, I could certainly provide that to you and point out exactly where they are on those plans.
Uh, I was more wondering, are we just looking to reduce the number, just to reduce it, or were we looking to reduce the causes of why these students are being suspended in the first place?
Uh, both. So, uh, we are analyzing the data to find out, um, what our overall rates are, uh, what students are suspended. Are they repeat offenders, um, the demographics breaking down those students by, uh, ethnicity, disability, et cetera? And then putting, um, intervention strategies into place to reduce those. Same, same with attendance as far as intervening for, uh, our student groups for attendance.
And if I can jump in, I mean, that's the whole purpose of having a, 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 uh, aligned and coherent uh, social emotional learning and positive behavior intervention and supports plan, uh, because then, you know, with the proper training and with the proper, um, uh, use of these, of these different techniques, especially using, uh, trauma-informed practices on the front end before things happen as a preventive measure, and then using restorative practices on the, on the back end after something happens to, um, you know, deal with those issues is a part of, uh, of what we hope to create moving forward. to, you know, deal with those issues is a part of what we hope to create moving forward.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Sang.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. This is an action item. So may I have a motion to move this to the regular board meeting on Thursday, June 23rd, 2022? Mr. Miller, is there, excuse me, Mr. Field, is there a second? Ms. Brown, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, you guys have it. That brings us to Mr. Sickitt, Special Education Plan Update.
Evening, Mr. Sickitt.
Hi. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the special education supervisors for assisting me with this plan. It is quite extensive and is posted on the website. It's well over 100 pages, but what I'm about to show you is just a brief overview. Next slide, please. The Alltown School District's blueprint for success, we're going to focus on Dr. Stanford's priority one, accelerating the academic performance of all students. There's strategy one A, one B, and one E will be included in this. Empowering and equipping educators to provide consistent and quality instruction to all students and accelerate the acquisition of foundational reading and math, which is scratched out mistakenly. It looks like our logo is covering it, but that word is math by students across all grade levels. Next, we're going to move into, this is the picture of ASD compared to the Pennsylvania state with our statistics. Our grand total students that are in special education in the Allentown School District, we have 3,219 students over all of these disabilities. The one that really pops out for us and compared to the state is our autistic support population. Our students with autism extremely high, and I will be addressing that in future slides. Excellent. The written plan actually highlights certain things. PDE requires us to define the plan in the following targeted areas, child find. So we talk about what it is and where we're going with it, which I'm going to do in future slides of all of these things, identifying students with learning disabilities, behavioral supports, putting students in a least restrictive environment, and professional development for staff. First, we'll address child find. What is it? Child find is our December 1st count. That is where we submit all the amount of students that we had, as I spoke to previously, 3,200 plus. We submit that to PDE, which equates to funding for us, which will also be addressed. But within this, we start with the child study process, and then we move to see where the student is in core instruction. We look at database decision-making based on the data that we have been given. Within that, if we see targeted interventions are not helping, we look to the multidisciplinary team to move forward to possibly evaluate the kid, the student, to see if you need special education services. Next slide, please. Now, this is the part where we do identify it, and we want to talk a little bit about how what the multidisciplinary evaluation is conducted by a team. It is led by the school certified school psychologist, but you have the teacher and teachers that touch this student every day. The other staff that's involved, it could be anyone from a guidance counselor to a para, but more most importantly, we're including the family and the parent. We offer various forms of behavioral support for students. If a student has an IEP and has some behavioral concerns, we look at functional behavioral assessments and follow that up with a positive support behavior plan. That plan is a roadmap for teachers to assist this student in how to help this student be more successful in the classroom. We have our sites program K to 12. Sites is a student intensive treatment and emotional support program. We offer that at Roosevelt from K to five, Trexler from six to eight, and Allen from nine to 12. Basically, that program is a make as simple as possible, a half of day of academics and a half of the day of intense counseling. There's medical doctors involved, psychiatrists involved, and counselors. We also have a contingent of behavior specialists that currently support our elementary schools. But one of the things we provide ongoing support for behavior management through crisis prevention intervention. That's what we train our teachers, staff, anyone that we can on this. It basically what that is, it's verbal de-escalation along with how to protect a student if they are a danger to themselves or others. Next slide, please. Oh, you're pretty good, Jose. The least restrictive environment means that a student who has a disability has the opportunity to be educated with their non-disabled peers to the greatest extent possible, which means we try to push all of our students into our core programming. Within this ASD, we also provide the full continuum of services for any student with any disability. We have learning support, emotional support, autistic support, life skill support, and multi-disability support. Next slide is professional development. We targeted areas in academics such as reading and math, behavioral support, such as I related to earlier with our crisis prevention intervention, our CPI training. That is true professional development. Our transition programs for our secondary students as well as our younger students. Training in our autistic support area, we currently partner with different universities that to assist our newer autistic support classroom teachers. And we also give paraprofessional professional development every year. One of the big things that we reach out to different organizations because students have not only the supports from us within ASD, but they have it throughout the community. So what we do, when they do have these agencies attached to the student, we're aware of it and we bring them in to be part of the IEP team. So within that, we have so many, I'm not going to list all of these things. These are just certain examples of people, but very simply to the bottom bullet would be a therapeutic support staff. What that is, is a student might get that from an outside agency where they're allotted certain hours to assist them with certain things. This happens in our generally in our artistic support and our emotional support population. It assists them not only at home but in school. So when they provide a treatment plan for the student in an emotional support setting, we want to make sure it carries over into the home to assist them with that. Now, with all of this being said, and all of the different key areas that we touched, we have numerous amounts of staff that are attached to this. So the next two slides are going to talk a little bit about our funding, and this was the best way to break it down. I'm going to talk through this and try and help you read it, and then we'll move on to a little bit better visual maybe, and then we'll get ready to close. So what we decided to do is do revenues versus expenses. And we went back, as you can see, to 201819 school year. Within that, we talked about special ed funding, what we get from PDE. And then, we as a school district raise money through access funds. We are awarded an IDEA grant every year through what we currently do, and that will continue on, which leads us to the total revenue. So I'm going to let you look at the numbers, but as you can see, over the years, we have increased approximately revenue-wise. Total revenue, we have increased approximately $4 million, if I'm reading it correctly. It's a little foggy. But you look at our special ed funding from the state has pretty much stayed flat throughout the number of years. It has now approximately $1,800,000 more than it was in 2018. But this is the reason for telling this part of the story when it comes to the special ed plan, when you look at our expenses. When you look at expenses from 201819, and I'll go to the very last column, I will explain, first I will explain what each column is. ASD is expenses is the amount of special ed funding that is our, that our, our expenses. And then the next line says CF sped expenses. That is charter school, special ed students. And then we have, of course, a total expense. When you look at the total revenue compared to the total expenses, it's very, very large. And with all of that being said, I'd like to thank our business manager, Harry, for assisting me with this, but we're going to move to the visual, which is the next slide. And this is what we just wanted to show. The majority from the blue, if you put the blue into the red and you can still see where you're at, the rest of that comes out of our general fund. That is, at this point, I'd like you to move to the next slide, please. And with all of that finances and things that we have, we are looking at at this point in time today, we have 424 autistic support students. That number has grown by 12% over the last three years. The district has grown from 43 classrooms in 2019 to our current population of 51. We are next year going to have to open up for compliance reasons, three additional classrooms. But with that comes the need for related service people, the need for, as alluded to in the plan, behavior specialists. So these are things that are additional additional asks when we talk about staffing and the budget for 20223. At this point, we've concluded, and I'd be willing to ask any questions, answer any questions.
And so those autistic classrooms, are they, I think, and I was just asking Ms. Ramo, because I recall they were upwards towards a million dollars apiece in cost by the time we expense all that out?
It was not quite that high. What we calculated out was the cost for the teacher in autistic support classroom. We also have two paraprofessionals, eight students in that classroom. If memory serves me correctly, in 2018, I did a presentation with that data on it, and I believe it came to approximately $275,000 per classroom. Just when we calculated, we didn't include the amount of
Services.
We included the services by the teacher and the para. We didn't include the things I have to buy special furniture, as I did a couple of months ago, but that purchase. Those types of things weren't included in that 275 number.
Okay, and let me, let me, let me correct not only my, and that's why I wanted to ask the question, in my understanding, my head on the number. And secondly, it's not a cost, it's an investment for our students.
Absolutely.
And I didn't mean to come across like that. However, the the disparate reimbursement that the state, the state doesn't see it as an investment in our students, clearly. And I'm not asking you to be political, but I'm going to say that publicly.
Understood.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Sickitt.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do. Okay. So are you familiar with the IMPACT program? So.
Surface level, I would absolutely not be able to speak about it.
So my, my concern is something that I've noticed within the IMPACT program, which is a program where students get a one-time chance if they commit a crime that is not a felony, but less than a felony, they can enter into this program. Something that I noticed within this program is that most students that are in this program has an IEP.
Okay.
So with this program, how could it help our students that have behavioral IEPs from being placed in certain situations or respond to certain situations that can lead them to becoming part of the IMPACT program?
I don't quite have your answer, but I'd like to answer it in a different way. With, this is a program within the community. I found out about several other programs that are in the community such as CASA. And what we've done is we've reached out to them. We had a monthly meeting, I'm sorry, it was more than that. It was bi-weekly, it was weekly at first, and then it turned into every two weeks where we would talk through Zoom and talk about the students and how they could be more included. We were able to, with parent permission, include them as part of the IEP team. And maybe I could speak to you more, not here in this realm, but you can give me more information, and we could just try and reach out to that group and see if where we can go with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Do either of my colleagues on Zoom have any questions?
I do not.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. All right.
Thank you.
This is an action item. So if I could please have a motion to move this to the regular board meeting on Thursday, June 23rd?
The move.
Mr. Miller, seconded by Ms. Matheson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I believe the next two items are curriculum-related items. So if it's all right with my colleagues, there will take both presentations and one motion for the two. And that would take us to Ms. Smith and Ms. Smith and Ms. Randy.
Good evening. We're going to start with a presentation and end with the with the board memos, just so everything gets put into perspective. So we wanted to give you a curriculum process update, so you had an idea of where we've been going with curriculum and where we're going over the next six years. So the rationale for what we're doing all lies within recommendation four and ensuring that we have a curriculum, a comprehensive curriculum management system, providing for content, context, and cognition for students. We have to make sure that we have a system that's district-wide for the design, delivery, monitoring, and evaluation of our curriculum. This also, in addition to being driven, the driving force was the PDK audit, is aligned to priority one to accelerate academic performance for all students. Next slide, please. So why have a curriculum process? You know, I said before, we need to establish a K-12 process for ensuring that our curriculum provides for what our students need, including the PDK findings, which inform the work of the committee. Curriculum processes help try to identify gaps and need assess needs assessments as you move through. It also identifies professional development needs. It allows you to revise, refine, and develop the existing curriculum that you currently have, as well as developing new curriculum, and devise a plan for developing non-core curriculum. So all of our related arts, technology, and those things that don't fall in the core four that you would normally hear. It also allows us to develop an evaluation process and procedure for the curriculum.
As part of our curriculum development, we have four phases for our curriculum development and review cycle. So the first phase, and this is a lengthy process, and it's not a quick process. Our first phase is researching, mapping, curriculum mapping, and curriculum council. So not only do members of the committee have, the members of the committee also present to curriculum council to make sure they're on the right track and to receive feedback and guidance. Phase two, after you've done your research and you've looked at what you're currently doing in your mapping, you're doing your curriculum writing, your resource selection, and your professional development. Followed by the next phase, which is actual implementation of the curriculum and the new resource. And then phase three might last a few years, and that's a review, edit, and revise. So we're constantly looking at our curriculum, making the reviewing it, making edits as we need to, and revising as necessary. So we're constantly looking at our curriculum, making the, reviewing it, making edits as we need to and revising as necessary. Next slide. Our update so far, what we've accomplished this year is, in August, you have proved Dr. Mary Ann Wright to, as our curriculum consultant. We developed a high school English and a social studies K-12 curriculum development and review committee. In September, we started with building a foundation of what is a process? What is curriculum mapping and understanding by design? In December, we started to involve our supervisors of instruction in the work. In April, the committee worked to select a curriculum mapping software. And in April through now, we've been planning our summer institute for curriculum.
So through the process of working with social studies, K-12 social studies, and 912 English, we've learned a whole lot along the way. So now that we're moving into our second year of working through the curriculum process, we wanted to give you an update on when things will be adopted, when things, when you're going to see things in different phases. So in elementary, we said we started K-5 social studies, it was actually K-12 social studies, so you'll see it, the same thing in every slide. But in phase one this year, next year, we're going to be starting ELA K-5 in September, actually, we're starting it in June because we're going to get ahead of the game and get some summer PD in. K-5 social studies will be in phase two, so they'll be writing curriculum, they'll be selecting their resources and, and working in the curriculum mapping software to ensure that teachers have everything they need to plan their lessons. K-5 math will be starting in January. And K-5 science will also be starting in September at the same time. So as you map that out, every time you see something started, about a year and a half later, you'll be in phase three, which is the actual implementation of the new curriculum, of the new resource. And then you, you follow that cycle. Curriculum cycles usually last about seven years. By the time you start it, adopt it, revise, review, and edit, and then continue on as you go. Next slide, please. Middle school as well, you'll see we're starting 68 ELA in June. We're starting 68 science in June, and we're also starting 68 math in January. We're going to have a very busy year. We're also starting world languages because we want to make sure that we get that in as well. So there'll be a staggering of implementation. The differences between middle school and elementary, elementary teachers teach every single subject. So it's difficult to pile on implementations, right? Too many at the same time, so there'll be a staggering of implementation for elementary teachers. Where in the middle school, they're more subject-specific. So you can do a math and a science at the same time because they teach, they're, they're certified in those specific areas. So you'll see that in middle school and high school. Next slide, please. 912 English, we started, we've been working pretty diligently with 912 English, and we're going to actually be able to start an implementation with a small group in January, hopefully, with them, because they'll be selecting their materials and writing over the summer and into the fall. You'll see the same thing, 912 math will start next year, 912 science will start next year, and you'll also see world languages started next year as well. We have identified 24, 25 on all three, all three slides, just so you have an idea that we've mapped out the, the purchases for the curriculum to make sure that it aligns with the ESRS money that we have, so we can get all of those resources in and then budget out for curriculum process as we go through.
Tonight, we will be making a recommendation and asking you to purchase chalk curriculum mapping software for us. Curriculum mapping software allows for ongoing curriculum development, implementation, and review. The software will allow teachers, supervisors, administrators to do the following things, to be able to centralize curriculum mapping and identify district-wide standard alignments and gaps. So as we're looking at our data and we're seeing that there's a standard that our students are struggling with, we will be able to go into the software and see how many times that standard has been taught in that year and in the year previously. And we will be able to revise and tweak as we need to, based on the data we have from chalk. They'll also be able to collaborate real time on unit plans. They'll be able to attach multimedia content and videos to, and presentations within the software. We'll be able to share curriculum components with the community to foster impactful relationships. We'll be able to provide feedback and we'll be able to review our curriculum horizontally and vertically to ensure alignment across grade levels. Next slide, please.
So our next steps, you'll see, we've been planning for a summer institute to be able to provide a summer institute for teachers to get the beginning stages of the understanding of what a curriculum process is, what is curriculum mapping with our K-12 science, K-8 ELA, and get them started. And also math, that's not up there. We're starting a UDL summer admin book study to prepare for the development of the universal design for learning and, and figure out what our plan and our focus is going to be for that. We're currently coordinating the CDRC committees for K-12 science and K-8 ELA, and we'll start, we'll do math in the fall. What else? Continue working with DaVinci for science best practices as we work through, because it's a continuous process that you're providing professional development as you're working through the mapping process. So when we get to the new curriculum, it's not, you know, it's not a huge under, as, as big of an undertaking to have to do everything at the same time. And then January, we'll begin K-12 mathematics as well. Next slide. So last thing is just that we're requesting the board's approval to purchase the chalk curriculum mapping software that Ms. Smith had spoke about at a cost of 46,500. And we're also requesting the board's approval for a continuation of the consulting services for Dr. Mary Ann Wright. Any questions?
Any questions from my colleagues?
Yes, I have a question. You were saying that, what, what did you say about Dr. Mary Ann Wright about her services?
So she's been working with us as we've been developing the curriculum process and working with us in absence of a, of a chief academic officer, developing the process, developing and providing professional development for our teachers. So there, there's been a lot of tasks that she's been helping to map out in the process and has been a key player in, in all of the work that we've done thus far.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Any other questions, Mr. Thiel?
Thank you, Ms. Well, thank you for the presentation. Very much appreciate it. Dr. Stanford, just a question, I, well, let me make a statement, just to preface that, I know we've, we've been. Where I'm looking for, I can't find the right word to sound a little more polished. To be very transparent, we've been deficient in our curriculum leadership, not, not in anyone's fault here among the staff. Everybody's really done a great, you know, work as a team over the years. We haven't had the leadership there, as we've recognized, the board has recognized, we've been working towards that. So as we look down the road towards leadership for curriculum, right, and the academic piece, I guess my question is, you know, what's the plan to ensure the continuity of this work that's already been done and how that falls in with the new leadership? Because I've, I've been on this board eight and a half years, and I've seen occasions where a lot of work goes into something, and then somebody in leadership comes in, and then it was, you know, disregarded.
Madam President, to Mr. Thiel, thank you for that question. You know, one of the things that is very important to me is to have that sort of continuity, but especially respecting the work that's been done in the past, but being able to go forward and, you know, blaze a new path and a path that, you know, will make a difference in the lives of our students and our teachers on a daily basis. And so one of the things that I certainly want to be able to do is transition Ms. Sawyer into a leadership role to continue the, the, the work that's being done in curriculum along with the chief academic officer position that we've talked about, that I've been talking about as well. Yep.
Any other questions? Okay.
I just.
Mr. Palmer, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure I was just summing it up for everyone. You, when you were asking for Dr. Mary Ann Wright, what was that in lieu of? What position was that in lieu of?
The chief academic officer.
Okay. And so the 125 for, I guess, 19 weeks of service, so that's about 93,000?
Up to.
Up to 750 hours. This year, she used less than 500 hours. We upped it to 750 due to the number of curriculums that we will be working on. But there's not a stat saying it will be this many. She uses what she needs to help support us and, but will not exceed that number.
Is there like a, I guess, best way to put it, like a timeframe of when she, the most hours would be used, or?
Probably through the months of September to February, March. She'll be working with us for some of the summer PD, but we're also going to be leading some of the summer PD. That's why we've been working to train the staff that we have on the process. So we can then ensure that when she is no longer here, we can continue on with what we started.
All right, and I just want to echo Mr. Thiel and Dr. Stanford, as well as appreciate everything you guys do, and I know it's a lot of hard work going on.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Now that is, well, we, we did a presentation of both, so, so we had, number three was part of the presentation, and number four, the chalk curriculum mapping, was also part of the presentation. So if my colleagues have no objection, we'll take one motion for both three and four. And I have a raised hand by Ms. Matheson, is there a second? Mr. Thiel, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did I miss something? Oh, good Lord, it's been a long day. That's disturbing. Okay. Let's see if I can do this, I'm glad that I will not be chairing building and finance. Items five through eight are all renewals of curriculum. So if no one has any questions on any of those items, we can take a motion for all of them to move forward to the regular board meeting on June 23rd. No opposition to that, so Ms. Matheson has made a motion to move that to the regular board meeting on Thursday, 23rd. Mr. Miller. Has seconded, is there any further discussion? Mr. Thiel?
I have a question on item, is exhibit K, looking at Word docs, the technology purchase of 6.5 million.
We haven't gotten there yet, we're on five through eight.
Did I miss that? I'm sorry. Five through eight, gotcha.
All right, any questions on items five through eight? Seeing and hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. All right, now we're on to item number nine, and that is a presentation by Ms. Pollock regarding the student and family district handbook.
I would like to request the board's approval of the Allentown School District Student and Family Handbook for the 2022, 2023 school year. The handbook provides students and families with an understanding of district guidelines, important information, and expectations. I'll just highlight a few of the updates for the handbook. There's additional language around attendance, the removal of language requiring the student be present for kindergarten registration. Vaping was added to the use of tobacco products to align with the policy. Policy summary 246 for school wellness will be added in addition to sections on student device expectations, general information on virtual campus, obtaining a work permit, and cellphone expectations and consequences. The cost for the handbooks is $15,000 and is accounted for in the general fund.
Any questions?
So, in reference to the tobacco and vape pens, so that means students are not allowed on any of our campuses, any of our schools with vape pens, any tobacco products, is that correct?
That's correct, and that's in the current policy now, that, that verbiage will be added, that one word was not in the handbook.
So my question is, I, I don't remember where we had this discussion at, but I would hope that we can have signs, maybe a sign or two to reinforce that, because it has always been in the policy, but it's not being followed. So I would really like to see that, if it's possible.
I think that's something we can definitely revisit.
Thank you. Any other questions from Ms. Pollock?
I agree with Ms. Brown. We should have signage put up, it was just recently that I've seen it with my own eyes, with kids on an elementary school property vaping, so there needs to be some kind of signage put up in, with regards to that.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to move this agenda item to the regular board meeting. Ms. Brown, is there a second? Mr. Palmer? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next up, we have Ms. Smith again for non-public services.
Good evening. Tonight, this is kind of a placeholder to take to the board meeting at the end of the month to have a conversation with you about the non-public services. We're in the process of an RFP where we've had four companies, vendors, return proposals, we're going through them, we're contacting somebody, we didn't have enough time to have that contract ready for you to look at tonight. We are required to provide non-public services to students that live in Allentown that go to non-public schools. So our diocese schools and Grace Montessori, those, those schools. And what we do is we provide intervention to support, intervention support to those students. We get, as part of our Title I allocation, we, there's a formula that identifies how much non-public student gets, and then we have that calculation for schools, and that's how we determine what our contract looks like. So we're in the process of doing all of that, and you will have that information. Again, we are required to provide services to our students who are Allentown students who attend non-public schools, and this is a purchase for students attending the non-public schools, not ASD, not students attending our ASD schools. Any questions?
You mentioned dioceses, but that's also charter schools as well.
Charter schools are not part of this.
Okay, so just, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion to move this forward to the regular board meeting on June 23rd.
Move.
Mr. Miller, is there a second? Mr. Thiel, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move forward to the next board meeting, thank you very much. That brings us to Ms. Smith again for technology purchases.
Good evening yet again. Tonight, again, this request is, we are still waiting for Pennsylvania Department of Education approval, so this is pending PDE approval. We are looking to purchase projectors, permetium displays and stands, web cameras, document cameras, Chromebook chargers, calculators for our middle school and high school students, Dell monitors for a lab design as a part of a one-time investment cost of $6,541,636. This purchase is going to allow us to create equitable 21st century technology-enhanced learning environments across all ASD classrooms, including William Penn and our newcomer academies. It will have available interactive displays on portable stands, and teachers will have access to document cameras, which will enhance their instruction and provide access to current and planned curricular and programmatic resources. This is aligned with priority one with accelerating the. This is aligned with pri- priority one with accelerating the academic, academic performance of all students. Um, it was purchased, um, the quotes are through Peppham, which is a, a cooperative purchasing organization. Um, again, we're waiting PDE approval, but we wanted to have, um, this in front of you. So at the end of the month, if you approve it and we have the approval, we can order and have this, the supply and demand to get the, um, resources in for the start of the school year.
Very much. Any questions?
Hi, Charlie.
I'm Ms. Smith. Um, so first question is, uh, training for our staff on all this product when technology comes in. You know, ensuring that it's actually, our, our folks, uh, are seeing something new, right? Or maybe new to them to use instructionally. And what's the plan to ensure that the best value for our students and our staff are, are happening with this investment?
Charlie, um, Mr. Thiel, I think, uh, professional learning is something that is at the forefront of our mind. And so there will be various, um, opportunities for professional learning. We can't put interactive boards in front of teachers in classrooms and not offer any support. So there will be support in how to use that. We'll be relying on our tech team on support to help create that professional learning, um, to ensure that what we're do, teachers know how to use it to best meet the needs of our students.
Thank you. And you did answer the question regarding Peppham. I'm very aware of Peppham on the vendor side as well. Um, I, I know in conversations, chairing the finance committee and working with Mr. Risticizian over the past, uh, however many months, one of the things that we've been working on, I know him and his team, I should say, not me, I take no credit at all, other than just conversations with, with Mr. Risticizian, is, is purchasing and, and ensuring that, you know, ASD is getting always the best, um, the best offer, right? Um, and I know as a vendor, even with Peppham, not currently, but in previous, previous professional life, that oftentimes folks would look at our Peppham price and place an order, but other entities would look at the Peppham price and say, well, can, would you accept this? And, and there would be a negotiation process in, in play. So, um, I'm wondering if there's a plan to ensure that this will go through our, our finance department and the purchasing process? Because, um, that's what they do best and it can help support other entities like, like technology and grants and, and, you know, academics. So, um, I guess that's my question. I know in the past, we haven't had a very robust purchasing department, but I know we've been working really hard at ensuring that.
I can say that there is great collaboration between, um, Mr. Risticizian.
You just gotta say it. You know, you say it once, it keeps staying over like I do, and it's rolled over.
As well as our new director of procurement, um, we're on in, ongoing conversations with everything. So for example, um, I just spoke non-public, Beth has been involved in that. This was involved through a technology with, uh, Peppham. So there are guidelines that are coming through on how, uh, we are operating from a federal standpoint. So you will be seeing policies and procedures coming your way in the next few months.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And I just wanted to say real quickly, uh, Madam President and Mr. Thiel, um, I, I know, um, Ms. Hildebrandt is also working on, um, a purchasing handbook for staff as well that will outline some best practices for use, uh, by the district going forward as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? I will entertain a motion to move this forward to the regular board meeting. Mr. Thiel, is there a second? Mr. Miller, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Right. That brings us to Ms. Breiter and a discussion on Pocket Talk.
Good evening, everyone. I'm requesting the board's approval to purchase two hundred fifty Pocket Talk interpretation devices at a projected cost of forty-five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars to improve communication with our district's non-English speaking students and families. Pocket Talk is a digital handheld device that provides two-way real-time voice translation in eighty-two different languages. It also supports each student's unique qualities and promotes cultural responsiveness. Uh, Pocket Talk assists with personalized learning and instruction. With this purchase, there will be training to prepare teachers and staff to operate Pocket Talk devices when communicating with our students and families.
Thank you, Ms. Breiter. Um, before I ask for questions, I just want to, I want to just publicly say, I think this is wonderful. When I read my board book last week, I was thrilled to see this. I know we've had some translation abilities over the last couple of years in parent meetings and things like that. And it has really, um, improved engagement for our families. And I think this is, uh, this is just a, you know, a really potential game changer. So I, I just wanted to say that. Anyone have any questions? Mr. Thiel?
If, if one comes out that can help me, I mean, my wife and I have a great marriage, but there's times that just some translation back and forth, I would, I would, just let me know, okay? Thank you, Ms. Breiter.
I'll check and see if that's one of the eighty-two different languages. I think that's what's really great about it. It actually really assists staff, um, with unique languages.
Yes. Any other questions? All right, seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion to move this forward to the regular board meeting on June twenty-third. Mr. Miller, is there a second? Mr. Thiel? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Breiter, and we've, um, had the pleasure of, uh, talking with Ms. Sawyer again regarding mobile STEM cards and purchase of science equipment.
Good evening again. So tonight, we're requesting board's approval for mobile STEM cards and a purchase of science equipment at the cost of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand fifty-six dollars and thirty cents, um, at all schools. And mobile STEM cards provide students with an authentic standards-based learning laboratory, integrating engineering design, mathematics, and scientific inquiry. They help eliminate disparities in access to STEM education by building STEM communities, creating a school-wide culture of inquiry-based STEM learning, provides high-quality professional development models by addressing instructional shifts, especially those that are coming our way associated with the new Pennsylvania science standards, supports teachers by equipping the classrooms with the necessary materials, equipment, and support to increase STEM literacy and creating collaborative networks to assist and direct students into STEM-related career pathways. Each school, uh, elementary school will receive a K-two and a three-five card differentiated by grade level. Um, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade will receive three carts. Um, and the high schools will be receiving all new equipment for their biology labs, forensic labs, um, microscopes, and, uh, a whole host of, uh, science equipment to equip their labs with the technology that's necessary. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Sawyer.
Thank you.
Entertained a motion to move this forward to the regular board meeting on June twenty-third. Ms. Brown, is there a second?
Aye.
Ms. Matheson? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that brings us to our final presentation for the education committee. Ms. Bryant, Imagine Learning Virtual Curriculum and Supports.
Good evening. Um, tonight, we do have a memo for you, um, as we would request this to be an action item. Um, but we do also have a presentation as well. Jose, did you receive, if you could bring that up? Thank you so much. Next slide. We'll begin with the rationale for virtual campus. Um, as you know, we've had, um, a virtual offering at the high school level for some time. Um, and due to the pandemic, we did have to have an emergency offering at the elementary and middle school levels as well. In this rationale, what we're proposing is a proactive K-through twelve approach to a virtual learning option for students in ASD. In this rationale, we're looking to provide high-quality innovative coursework, um, through the Imagine Learning platform, which is an asynchronous platform. In our virtual campus, all of our students, including special ed and English learners, will have access to core courses, electives, and they'll be engaged, um, in this asynchronous platform through a variety of assignments, projects, and assessments that will help drive their educational process. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. You are on it, Jose, thank you. With this Blueprint for Success connection, um, we did pull out priority one. We are still looking to accelerate the academic performance of all students and recognizing that how we do that may not be the same for all students. So all students may not perform in a brick and mortar setting. And by offering virtual learning as an option for students that this may work best, we are hoping to, um, not only accelerate their performance, but also make sure that we have a complete complement of programming that builds out our, our full capacity to offer an alternative education programming, not just how we see it as far as you can't make it in brick and mortar, where we're providing you other options. This is a choice for people as well who have come to learn themselves as learners and what it is that they need and how they can, um, achieve best. Next slide, please.
So we went out to RFP to find virtual providers and see what was out there. Um, the scope of services required, we were looking for staffing, um, to provide the online instruction, um, online curriculum platforms that were rigor, rigorous, engaging, Pennsylvania-based, standards-based, and supportive of the differentiated needs of learners from kindergarten through twelfth grade. We wanted it to have core elective and SEL course offerings for K-twelve, in addition to college and career readiness offerings, supports for students in special education and L, dedicated support person required to work specifically with Allentown School District throughout this process. A demonstration of the platform, we wanted to see a day in the life of a student, a day in the life of a parent, a day in life of an admin, um, full technical support, systems interoperability, PD for staff, students, and families. Because as we know, in an online environment, the students are home, and families need to understand how to use the system and how to best support their students as well. And we also wanted to ensure that the dashboard monitoring was real-time, um, that it showed real-time progress and that it was accessible to students and families as well as administrators. In evaluating the criteria, we received a total of nine proposals. Um, we sent out a second time and reviewed eight platform demonstrations when we asked for a, a formal demonstration. Um, of those eight, I believe we actually saw seven. Um, final platform, uh, demonstrations is what came our way out of the nine. Um, we wanted to see that they had experience working with medium to large urban public K-twelve school systems, um, that there was a degree of expertise and experience in delivering online learning experiences and virtual campus management, that they had proven effectiveness in urban settings with all student groups. The resources and materials were available and dedicated to the Allentown School District students, that there were flexible plans in place for extended learning, after-school learning, summer learning, and all those opportunities. Um, cost, references from a minimum of three urban schools, and communication plan to the district regarding timelines, technical setups, and student metrics.
So once we reviewed all of that, um, as it came to the rationale for selection, uh, we chose Imagine Learning as the provider for the platform that we would like to move forward with. Um, as part of that, in full transparency, Imagine Learning is the new name for the company, um, that we have used for several years now, um, at the, at the secondary level, um, edgenuity. Um, but moving forward, it's Imagine Learning, and again, it encompasses those materials that, um, are appropriate for students K-through twelve that will be able to access. Um, so as part of that rationale, we know that we have had, um, at least a five-year history with this company. Um, we've come to know team members, um, what the customer service aspect is like. We've built a positive relationship, positive rapport with this company, um, and we know that they have been very timely in their response and their support of the district with the virtual platform. Um, but also, it also came down to what they offered in terms of how it supports students, how it meets, um, the needs of all that we specked out as part of the criteria that we were looking for. If you, whoops, if you go to the next slide, you'll see, um, all of in detail the Imagine Learning supports that they can lay out for us. Um, so as part of this request, not only have we requested the platform usage as typical, but in addition, we are requesting some specific staffing that comes through the Imagine Learning, um, company to help support us in virtual campus. So staffing that will help transition us in the future when ASD takes this model back entirely. Um, we will have customizable courses available to us, again, in an asynchronous platform, which I will point out is different from what many in the K-through five and six to eight have experienced previously as far as a virtual offering. Um, there's a special ed coordinator to help us ensure that while there is customizability of courses, we want to remain aligned to, um, the goals and the needs within, um, IEPs and five oh fours. Um, there are speech-language therapy services offered so that we ensure that kids receive those in a timely way as well. We'll receive a success coach to help us in our implementation. Again, this is a program that's offered in sixty languages to help support so that, uh, we don't leave out anyone. Small group support is available also for students, um, in ELA and math, beginning in grades three, um, working through eight. Um, and that, that concept coaching is also something that's available for our brick and mortar students as well if we need to loop kids in and more support. Um, these concept coaching on-demand tutoring services are available seven days a week for those students in grades three through twelve. So it helps really provide that wraparound service for students who may really need to take advantage of the anytime learning that, uh, an online option like this provides, but it isn't in the absence of some support when they need it. So they'll be able to check in outside of the usual school Monday through Friday. Um, as we've said, these are, uh, this is a program that we have used. You've heard of it as edgenuity. Um, and in addition, we're going to receive, um, similar, if not more, technical supports and a project manager dedicated specifically to Allentown School District.
So the framework for virtual campus with all of that in mind, um, we had to look at how we were, um, how, what the virtual campus was going to look like in, in future years. Um, so students are going to have to re-enroll. Um, students that are accepted into virtual campus are committed to a minimum of a full semester. Um, they'll follow the twenty-two, twenty-three board-approved school calendar, um, and the assessment calendar. So they'll take all the same assessments that are required of Allentown School District students. They'll follow a daily schedule and comply with compulsory attendance requirements. They'll be provided devices and will follow the ASD acceptable use policy. Um, they can still participate in after-school activities, athletics, extracurricular programs at their home schools. They'll have the opportunity to transfer back into the home school at the end of the semester. Um, and students will need, still need their required vaccinations as part of the registration process into virtual campus. Expectations for their learning, they'll be required to attend a mandatory orientation, um, um, and platform training. So they have to understand how to use the platform to be able to learn virtually. Asynchronous learning platform for all VC students, support and intervention provided by staff. Students will log in for their attendance daily to complete instruction, follow the daily schedule and complete assigned modules, required to take all district-level benchmarks and assessments, and be monitored by staff weekly for their progress. Enrolling into virtual campus, um, there are enrollment forms that have been updated and will be available online, um, at all school sites. Families will meet with building designee to review the form, um, and to review student data. Now that we have a full two years of data for students, we can see their attendance in virtual learning.
Now that we have a full two years of data for students, we can see their attendance in virtual learning. We can see what their grades have been, what their benchmarks have been. So we have a better look at how they are independent virtual learners. So it's going to enable us to really be able to make decisions as to whether the student is, is going to succeed and is right for virtual learning, if they have the supports that they need to be a virtual learner. If the student has an IEP, the facilitator, the supervisor or the executive director of, of special ed will be notified and be involved in that decision as well. And the same thing with if the student is an EL student, the application will also be reviewed by the ESAL department designee. Next slide, please. So students and families will engage in virtual campus orientation sessions for the 2022, 23 school year to become familiar with the asynchronous platform and supports. Students and families will commit to expectations for virtual campus. They'll, as they enroll and are accepted, families will have access to the students dashboard to be able to monitor their progress as well as how well they're doing on assignments, their attendant, their attendance and all of that as well. In addition to Sapphire, they'll have both opportunities to be able to see grades and attendance. And then progress reports and report cards will be shared with families on the same schedule as the district calendar. So on this slide, we just kind of wanted to, once again, spec out for you very clearly the support that we're receiving out of Imagine Learning that was also part of that criteria for selecting them. So that dedicated project manager, the special education coordinator, the opportunity to have speech and language therapy services, which again, some of these are the more difficult to staff positions. So when we talk about sharing support services across virtual and across all our buildings, that was a key feature. The success coach, that concept coaching and on-demand tutoring support, the intervention sessions, and the fact that the staff that will be supporting students are PA-certified instructional staff. The ratios by which they'll support in this asynchronous model at the elementary level will have 50 students to one staff member at the secondary, 250 to one. There are still small group support opportunities built in with this proposal as well as Imagine Learning technical support available to us to help facilitate. So on the one hand, that is the staff support that Imagine can provide to us. On the other hand, you see sort of an ideal scenario for us as we build out a K-12 virtual campus to be a longstanding model, where it is we feel we may need some staffing support, some of which could be due to realignment of positions. If enrollment in a particular building may, may shift to have much more appeal to a virtual model than an in-person, there may be some opportunity for some assignments or paired assignments where you're supporting in a building and then you're also dedicated to support virtual. That will be dependent upon us seeing how popular enrollment is in this program. But right off the bat, our first bullet, we do anticipate needing to have at least a clerical position dedicated to enrollment and attendance for virtual attendance is a, is a huge piece for success and a piece that can get lost in the virtual model. And we want to make sure we stay on top of that, on top of compulsory attendance laws. In some instructional support positions would be ideal. And special education-related services continue to be provided to any special ed students who enroll virtually is a non-negotiable that, that we have to meet as well. Some additional bullets, again, like I said, this is our ideal list. It's, you know, but we wanted to be transparent in what it is. We can do this model with what is on the left, but with what is on the right, it's sort of the ideal ask. And then moving forward, we know communication is going to be key. We want to make sure that not only are parents aware of this model, this offering, how to enroll, where to find enrollment documents, where to find support in the enrollment process. But we also want to make sure that it is very clear and transparent to families what this model looks like now at the elementary and middle school level, where many may have been very familiar with a dedicated teacher on Zoom all day. Basically, classroom inserted into the computer screen is different in an asynchronous model. So, so people will have to have very much the family or parent's support to help them navigate, get them started, check in with their progress. All of that is key. So we want to make sure all of that is upfront and clear for families before they elect for this. And we'll be sharing all of this information on the website, mobile app. We'll be, of course, working with Melissa Reese and the Donovan Group to have a complete communication plan for this. Next slide, please. So with all of that, next steps, we would be looking for a board approval of Imagine Learning as our provider. And we do have the accompanying memo for that where you can see cost breakdown when we take a look at the K-12 virtual campus. Because it is based on enrollment, we are looking to not exceed approximately $4.6 million in a, in what we've specked out as max capacity enrollment for the program. This also includes the cost of workbooks for students at the K-5 elementary level. We would, with approval from, from the board, or at least knowing this is moving forward for, for a vote, would want to open up enrollment in June for families so that we are able to give them an idea of who, who would be accepted based on the criteria Brandy spoke to in earlier slides nearing the end of the month, early July, so that families can plan accordingly and that we get all of those invitations out and scheduling for the orientations in August, that will be key to helping to onboard families, particularly those families and students who are new to virtual learning. Are there any questions?
I have a few. So first, I would like to say what I like about this is it provides an opportunity for families to stay in a district who would like to leave the district for other opportunities as this. Secondly, my question is, Imagine Learner, you did mention that we had a long, I guess, five-year relationship with it as being edgenuity. So, personal experience, my son dislikes edgenuity. He is like annoyed, beyond annoyed. So when I mention it, he cringes. He said the most troubling thing for him is that you watch more videos than have an ability to work. So the videos kind of slow you down. So compared to that, does this software have the opportunity to, if you're watching the video, could you like speed it up a little bit? Do you have the option of just going straight to the work to do the work? If you feel that you have a comprehension of what is being displayed in the video? Or do you have to go through the video, take the time and then take the work to test?
So as I understand it, the videos would serve as sort of that instructional piece. For many students, it, it probably would not be in the best interest to have it enabled that you could fast forward through that and then just move on to the work in almost a yes-and-check type of process. So, so what I understand is that you do go through the video piece because that is your instructional piece. So for lack of saying myself as a teacher standing before you, that's your instructional component to help set you up for, for the work that comes after.
So how long are the videos? Like, because I think, and it could, this could be just my son. Well, it's not, because multiple students, but if you are watching a video for a certain period of time, your attention can go, you know, somewhere else if you're not invested or interested in what's being in front of you. So how long would you say the video would be? Or do you have the ability to go inside if the student is saying, like, this is taking so long, like, I can't get to the work? Because I think at a point in time, it would allow you, like, you can do one assignment and it seemed like you would never get to the end to complete the amount of assignments that you need to. So how does that work? Like, do you have the option to go into the software yourself and program the settings to say, all right, let me make it, you know, smaller for this specific student because they don't need that much time to watch the video and it's taking them too much time to get to the end. So do you guys have that option to be able to go into the software and to shorten it? Not to lose the information, but everybody pace is different.
Yeah, the courses are customizable, I think, for that, for the pace. And I think the amount of content within a standard or skill area that you're providing to that student for that ongoing practice. So we can adjust that piece. Video time, I think, would vary probably each time a video is present with each different content. So I can't speak to a specific amount of time for each video. They would all vary depending. But I, I think it's, it's one of those things that how much is within a student's module of study is customizable. I don't think we can shave off time off a given video because it's like, kind of like a set lecture that's recorded and given to someone. I don't think we have the ability to shave that off, but perhaps you don't need as many practice components leading up to being released to work more independently.
Okay, and I have one more question. Is there an enrollment cap on how many students can be enrolled into the virtual program? And if so, how many?
We're looking to have K-5 capped at 500 students, 500 at the middle school level as well, and 700 for high school.
So I'm sorry, I have one more question. You said seven in high school. Okay. Or maybe it's not a question. So if we have 1,700 students enrolled in a virtual program, do you think it's a possibility that this will minimize the amount of students that we have in class, in a particular class, which will allow effective learning because our classes are oversized? So if we have this amount of students in virtual, it might make smaller size classrooms.
If, if capacity is maxed at each of those levels, in each class, you might not feel a direct correlation. It would, it would depend on the track of those students where they were being assigned for courses. I think popular courses or needed courses tend to have higher enrollments. But overall, if you, if you did, those, those are bodies that would not be in the building. So in places and spaces, you would feel less students. Yes, thank you.
Yes, I have a question. Yes, thank you. Okay, we're going back to the communication plan. I've looked at that and none of them, in the past, we've used La Mega and Latina, our radio stations. I didn't see that in the communication plan. And that is our two biggest way of speaking, ways of getting to our parents. Are we going to go back to using them?
Yes, I think we can push this out on all relevant channels. And I think it's a really good suggestion to bring, to bring forward here, and I'm taking notes.
Thank you, because they are relative and we had stopped and I didn't, I didn't understand why. And we really need to go back to that because that did help us with getting the message out to our, our, our parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sars. The other?
I, I think I'm missing the last slide. I don't have how much it'll cost.
It's in the, in the memo. The overall amount is not to exceed approximately $4.6 million if we come in at all caps to enrollment. But the per pupil cost is broken out by semester because we're on semester enrollment basis. So at the elementary level, it's 1,400 per semester, per student. And at the secondary level, it's not to exceed 1,300 per semester.
Seeing hearing no other questions, I will entertain a motion to move this forward to the regular board meeting on June 23rd. Ms. Brown, there a second? Mr. Thiel, any further discussion? Being in hearing none, may all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. That brings us to the point of this meeting where if there are any cards for non-agenda items, which we do not have, is there any old business related to the education committee? Any new business? Have a motion to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
The field, Ms. Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you very much.
All right, I'd like to call the building committee of the whole for the month of June to order. On tonight, tonight's agenda, we've got a request for the board's approval of the Uniform Rental Service Agreement. And any comments from the superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, no, I do not.
Any comments on agenda items for the public? Okay, then I'll turn over the administration for item number one.
Does it work now? There we go. Apologies. I'll start over. Tonight, I'm requesting board approval to award the bid for the custodial and maintenance employee uniform rental services to Cintas Corporation, 164 East Main Street in Mayes, PA, 18049. This is for a three-year period for the amount of $76,440 with an option, with an optional two years for $77,968. This item was advertised and bid publicly. One bid was submitted. This action item request is, does align with an entry plan priority. It has been reviewed by the district solicitor and I recommend this item be considered as an action item at the regular board meeting scheduled for June 23rd, 2022.
Any question for my fellow board members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to move this to the end of the month. Ms. Wilt, second by Mr. Thiel, all in favor, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, this moves forward. That's our only action item. So any comments from the public on non-agenda items? No cards, any old business, new business or grass catcher? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Wilt, second by Ms. Brown, all in favor? This meeting is adjourned.
Before we start, the finance committee will take a five-minute recess. Before we start, the finance committee will take a five-minute recess.
If we could all take our seats so Mr. Phil can convene the finance committee.
Good evening again. I'll call the order of the finance committee of the whole of the Island Town School District here on Thursday, June ninth. We do have a number of items on the agenda today, and I'm not going to review each of them uh, individually myself here this evening. Uh, but I know we will have um, a report from our auditors here, an audit report, excuse me. Um, but before we get to that, I will ask for any comments from the public on agenda items? No, still no comment cards. My goodness. Um, Mr. Uh, Dr. Stanford, sorry. Do you have any comments, sir?
No, I do not, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will ask Mr. Risticizian to um, step up to the podium, I presume, and, or you can sit down there. You can do whatever one you like. Whatever you want, Harry. It's, it's, uh, what is it, nine oh nine? So if you want to remain seated, you've probably been here all day. Uh huh, yeah, feel free. So thank you, Mr. Risticizian.
Oh, sure. Thank you. And, and being that it is nine oh nine, I'm gonna try to move this along pretty quickly. Uh, first up is the local auditor report. We do have Mr. Jeff Weiss from uh, Zelenkovsky Axelrod on Zoom. He will go over the results of the audit and give you an overview of what, what the audit process entails. Are you online?
All right, you hearing me, Harry? Everybody hearing me?
That we can hear you and we can see you.
Perfect. Well, I don't know if seeing me is the good thing or bad thing, but at least you can hear me, so. Um, all right, I'm gonna present the audit. Do we, Harry, do we have the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Be able to share and put up or?
Turn it up.
Jose, can you put up the PowerPoint?
It's short, so Jose should be able to keep up with me. I'll, I'll have him flip slide. I'll tell him in the flip if he wants to. Perfect. All right, so Harry said, my name's Jeff Weiss. I'm the managing partner for Zelenkovsky Axelrod and the partner in charge of the school district's audit. Um, which was issued with a date of May twenty-fifth. Um, so we're presenting the audit. Um, you can go to the first, the, the next slide, just to kind of give a presentation on who we are. We're a firm that specializes in providing audit and consulting to governmental entities as well as not-for-profits. Uh, we're a regional firm with six offices in Delaware, Maryland, and mostly in Pennsylvania. So our responsibility when it comes to the audit is to issue an opinion on your financial statements and whether or not they're materially correct. And then we also have a responsibility um, to review internal control, but we do not issue an opinion on it. Um, we have to gain an understanding of internal control over both the financial statements and also your compliance with laws and regulations as well as your grant agreements. And go to the next slide. And the district's responsibilities when it comes to the audit. Um, the district's responsible to prepare the financial statements in accordance with um, U S GAAP. And also the preparation of um, the other information that's included in the financial statements, which is the um, required supplementary information. And that required supplementary information includes the management's discussion analysis, uh, budgetary comparison schedules, and then required pension and O P E B information. Go on to the next slide, number four, and the results of the audit for the year. And we did issue unmodified opinions on the financial statements, which means that they are presented correctly in all material respects. We also audited um, the district's component unit, the Island Town Public Library, and we issued a clean opinion on that. Um, and then when it comes to the federal grant compliance, which we also have to do under what's called the Uniform Guidance. Um, and the Single Audit Act is, is what most people refer to it by. We did have a um, three findings. One of them was a repeat finding from the prior year. Uh, that's two thousand twenty-one oh three, and I think last year was two thousand twenty zero zero one. Um, and then we had two new findings, two thousand twenty-one oh one. Under activities allowed, there was one teacher certificate, one teacher file that we pulled um, that did not have up-to-date um, background checks, current background checks. And then under activities allowed for child nutrition cluster, um, some of the, the invoices we selected were not properly approved. Uh, there was some changeover in that department and, and things didn't get approved correctly. We didn't find any issues with, with the expenditures. What walls it was, was an internal control issue with the um, items not being approved properly. Should be on number five right now. So some of the new accounting principles that came out in two thousand twenty-one audit. Um, Gatsby statement number eighty-four is fiduciary activities. We now have to report what's called custodial funds instead of what was deemed in the old, in the past agency funds. And there's actually now a statement of net changes um, for net position for the custodial fund. So it's just a slight change in presentation. How those items are reported. Some funds that had been previously reported as agency are now reported as governmental. So when you look at the financial statements, you will see a slight restatement for those items coming in. Um, there were a couple other Gatsby statements that didn't have an effect. Um, but note, one of the financial statements contains all the information um, about effective dates of some upcoming Gaspys. So on the next, um, the biggest thing coming up is leases. Um, we've been talking to Harry about it um, as we go on, and that's something that's gonna have to come into the next year, leases that um, the school district takes care of or has. And then, so just to cover some financial results in the numbers, so your governmental activities net position deficit was three hundred and fifty million dollars. That is actually a decrease in the deficit from two thousand twenty of eleven million dollars. And the biggest thing to note on that deficit, that's caused by your pension and O P E B plans. There is actually three hundred ninety-three million of that um, deficit is caused by the pension and O P E B plans. And then the restricted, the restricted net position of eleven million dollars is restricted amount for debt service. The business type activities, which is the food service program, showed a net position deficit of four point two million dollars. That was actually increased from two thousand twenty by seven hundred thousand. Next slide, um, we're just showing some comparative financial results um, as the years go on. Um, you can see this year, your governmental activities revenue went up about four point seven percent from three hundred thirty-three million to three hundred and forty-nine. Uh, and your expenses went up by a little under two percent. Um, actually, they dropped two percent um, from three hundred forty-four to three hundred eighty-eight or three hundred thirty-eight. So it's always good when the expenses drop and the revenues go up. Next page. Most people like to know um, exactly on the, the, the general fund. So your, your general fund had total revenues of three hundred and forty-nine millions without transfers and expenses of three hundred and thirty-nine million. Your net change was just under ten million dollars. In two thousand twenty and actually in, you know, I think in a couple of past years, we've been talking every time we come about the ongoing deficits, um, operating deficits as the years go on. Um, two thousand twenty-one is kind of a anomaly that we will warn you about. Two thousand twenty-one saw a significant amount of uh, one-time revenues related to COVID. Um, so take the results that occurred in two thousand twenty-one with a grain of salt in that some of that revenue may not reoccur in future years. Um, a lot of it is reoccurring in two thousand twenty-two fiscal year. But it's just a warning that I'll make that, you know, th- those revenues probably sometime will start to dry up. So the end of the year fund balance was fourteen point eight million with fourteen point five million of that on a sign in the general fund. And then the next page has some historical results. And here you'll see where, where I talked about the revenues went up um, five point four percent compared to, to two thousand twenty where they only, they went up a very small amount, only point two percent. Um, and then the expenditures went up about one point two percent from two thousand twenty, um, which, so the, the increase in the revenues versus the increasing expenses is, is the result of or is the result of why your net, your general fund fund balance went up. Next page, so five-year changes in fund balance. Um, so yeah, there's the fund balance. As we said, over the past few years, we've been harping on the fact that the fund balance was starting to decline and was declining over the years. Um, but yeah, the nice pickup in two thousand twenty-one, um, as I mentioned on the previous slides. Next slide, food service fund. Um, the net position, as I stated earlier, is about four point three million dollar deficit. Um, one little less than point one million of that is actually net investment in capital assets. And then your, your change in that position, as I stated before, was about seven hundred thousand dollar increase in the deficit from two thousand twenty. And then the items on the single audit that I talked about earlier, um, the four major programs that were audited on the next slide, slide twelve. Um, the four major programs that we looked at were Title One Child Nutrition, the coronavirus relief fund and the education stabilization fund. As I stated earlier, there's a lot of one-time grants or one or two-year grants that are occurring here. Um, and so tho- those are the coronavirus relief fund and also the education stabilization fund that came out of the CARES Act at the federal government level. Uh, next slide, um, the findings, um, Title One Grants. Four quarterly reports are required to be filed and one of them was not filed. Um, child nutrition cluster, twenty-five expenditures, they weren't properly approved. Um, as I stated previously, there was no issue with those expenditures. They just didn't have the proper approvals. They didn't go through the, the internal controls that they should have went through. And then Title One against one teacher file was selected not having up-to-date background check. Just some things to speak about. I kind of mentioned this earlier. Got, these, these are a couple items that are going to affect the district um, in, in the coming years. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two is leases. Um, it's going to require pretty much operating leases go away. Um, pretty much all leases need to be capitalized in one form or another. And then Gatsby ninety-six is kind of the same thing, but related to subscription-based information technology arrangements. So any arrangements for your utilizing outside entities um, with subscription-based information technology is going to actually require you to do the same thing, kind of capitalize it. Um, it's a little bit of a uh, just something, a lot, a lot of us as accountants don't, don't know why they're doing this, but this is the governmental accounting standard boards. Um, there is a bunch of other Gatsby pronouncements that probably won't have a dramatic impact, but we'll continue to talk to Harry about them as we go forward. And then my last slide is to thank you and to thank Harry and his group. There was, there was, like I said, a lot of different items. Those two major programs this year are pretty much new, new programs. So it took a lot to get through them. There's a lot of CARES Act money and requirements related to the CARES Act money that came out and was provided to the governments throughout the country. So we appreciate everything that was done from Harry and his group and Tom Josiah, so. Thank you very much, and I will take any questions if anybody has them.
Does anybody have any questions? No questions?
Mr. Theo, may I add to what Jeff just said?
Please do.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the fact that we are, we are utilizing one-time revenue to help offset a lot of expenses. And and the other fact that we've had a lot of savings because we were closed in COVID. So Jeff and his team have been really patient with us as we get our accounting statements together, as we put our paperwork together. But at the end of the day, it's the result of the one-time savings from limited transportation, that's about $7 million. Obviously, that helps with the surplus that we've had the influx of revenue. So, you know, while we are trending in the right direction, I just want to caution us in terms of, you know, we're not out of the woods, there's still a lot of work to do. So Jeff, thanks to you, thanks to your team, really appreciate all the hard work you put into work with us to get through the audit.
Thank you.
So this is a item that needs to be brought on to the board meeting later this month, it's a motion item, and Ms. Matheson, have a second. Mrs. Wilt, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Want to thank you, Jeff. Keep in mind that Jeff is our auditor as the board, and we want to thank you for that, Jeff, on behalf of the board, I thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And also want to thank Harry and his team for, you know, working together through this audit and appreciate all the work that the team, the business office goes through with this. So thanks again, Jeff, appreciate it, and you don't need to stay here any longer unless you really, really have whatsoever, okay?
Hope I will see you guys later.
Thank you. Mr. Risticizian, onto item number two, the contract renewal with Tom Josiah, please.
Okay, so we're sticking with the audit theme. Essentially, Mr. Josiah has helped the district throughout the years with preparing financial schedules, draft financial statements. And we'd like to continue that partnership with them. This year, we're doing something a little different, and he's agreed to a three-year extension of the contract as opposed to the annual, typical annual renewal we go through. So I'd like to recommend that we renew the contract with Mr. Josiah for a three-year term where the hourly rate will go up by about $5 an hour per year. And our average expenses thus far is averaging around 35,000 to 40,000 a year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Risticizian? Seeing none, this is a motion item, Ms. Matheson, Mr. Miller, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And this moves on to the board meeting at the end of the month. Real exciting, item number three, does anybody have any questions on item number three? Paper supply bid for 2023, 22, 23 school year. I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Mrs. Wilt, second Mr. Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And hearing and seeing none opposed, this goes on to the board meeting at the month, item number four, child nutrition operating budget 2022, 23.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I'm here to request the board's approval for the Child Nutrition Services 2022, 2023 proposed operating budget. The Allentown School District's Child Nutrition Services Team offers a variety of services for students and their families. The proposed operating budget for the 2022, 2023 school year is $12,222,224. It's a lot of twos. So this budget reflects how funds are used to feed and support our students in Allentown School District. It does not affect the general fund, we are a, we're funded by the USDA, we are a fairly funded program. I recommend this item be considered as an action item at the regular board meeting on June 23rd, 2022. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to hear.
Jim, can you talk to the difference in the funding for the summer programs versus the?
Sure, so one of the things that we're concerned about is we, you know, we're in COVID, right? You know, under code right now, we're under these waivers, I'm not sure if everybody's aware of that, but the USDA has a plethora of waivers. And one of them is that we receive reimbursement right now for all meals served at a higher rate, the summer meal rate. The waivers are going to end June 30th, I'm not quite sure, again, if you've heard of this, but June 30th, and it's been quite a contentious subject in Congress. So what that means is that rate's going to go back to the National School Lunch Program rate, which is a lower rate. So that's why we reflect that in this budget, we're concerned about that. We've, I think, though, what we put together is something that we feel pretty solid about, but we just, we want you guys to be aware of that. Just wanted to share that with you.
Do we have any questions, my colleagues? Seeing none, this is an action item. Mr. Miller, second, Ms. Matheson, any discussion?
Mr. Palmer. Sorry, you spoke really fast for me, so the USDA is funding this?
The federal government, the national school lunch program, the school programs are funded by the USDA, that's, that's where we get our funding from.
So we're not funding this after the 30th, it's still the USDA?
No, no, yeah, yeah, exactly, USDA, it's just they're using a different reimbursement dollar amount. They're, it's not the summer program anymore that they're funding it under, it's going to be under the National School Lunch Program funding.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer, thank you, Mr. Pagioni. Any other discussion? Hearing, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here, and this goes on to the board meeting at the end of the month as well. Where'd my agenda go? There it is, ah, section 125, Mr. Risticizian.
Oh, we're really getting into the fun stuff now. So we've updated our.
This one could be very beneficial, by the way.
Yes, pay attention, this is important. So we've updated our section 125 document to better align with the terms of not only the AIA contract, but our new medical plan. And really, we've taken the time to enhance and upgrade our our document to be more compliant with current IRS sections. As part of the process, we engaged with Conrad Segal and utilized a multiple-step checklist to ensure for compliance with IRS code. Section 125, the Internal Revenue Code, sorry. So in your board package, you actually have two documents. One, one is the main plan document that that essentially guides the program as a whole. The second one is the employee summary document. I'd like to introduce Donnie Noble back there. Donnie's our benefits administrator, he's actually been a critical part of getting these documents not only updated and and fully compliant. But he's done a fantastic job of making sure that we have communicated out to our employees, opened up open enrollment. And really, he's one of the main factors why we have enrollment in Skyward today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Donnie to give you all the presentation.
Thank you, good evening. All right, so not to get confused with the previous item, but I'm going to be talking about the cafeteria plan. It is under section 125 of the Internal Revenue Code. It allows what, it's a written plan that has described specific requirements under section 125. It provides the opportunity for certain benefits to have pre-tax deductions. So essentially, it would reduce the taxable income of employees. Our plan has three key components, it's the, our premium conversion plan, which allows employees to pay for their healthcare premiums on a pre-tax basis. In addition, we also have the healthcare flexible spending account where employees can make voluntary pre-tax contributions to spend on healthcare expenses. These expenses are defined by the IRS. And then in addition, there's a dependent care flexible spending account that allows employees to make voluntary pre-tax contributions as well for dependent care expenses. Every year, the IRS kind of updates the maximum amount of funding that can go into those accounts, the healthcare flexible spending and the dependent care flexible spending accounts. And they provide guidance each year, we update those. So next slide. Okay, so our plan operates on the fiscal year calendar, so go from July 1st to June 30th. Employees are eligible to participate in the plan if they work at least 30 hours per week or as contractually allowed, that's also compliant with ACA. Participation in the plan is completely voluntary. And if you waive coverage, you will receive an opt-out bonus, but this is going to be taxable compensation. And next slide. So for enrollment in the plan, benefits are effective on the date of your hire, if you complete all the proper open enrollment. Existing employees are required to make their elections each plan year during open enrollment. And then, in addition, if there's any life-changing events, qualified life events, which are also defined by the IRS as well as in our document. So like a marriage, birth of child, divorce, you can make a change to your election there. Next slide. So enrollment in the plan, if you do not make a election, you will continue on as a member in the health plan with your current benefit coverage under our document. However, if you have a spouse and you don't make an election, they will be removed. In addition, you must enroll in the healthcare flexible spending account or the dependent care flexible spending account during the open enrollment period. If you're unable to do that, or at the time of hire, if you're unable to do that, you have to wait till the next open enrollment period. Employees are not eligible for the opt-out bonus as well unless they make that decision during open enrollment or the time of hire. Next slide. So currently included in our benefits programs and our providers, so for medical prescription drug, we have Highmark Blue Shield. For our dental program, we have United Concordia. And then for vision, we have NVA as well as Vision Benefits of America. And then our healthcare dependent, our healthcare and dependent care flexible spending accounts is by Health Equity. They were previously Wage Works, but they were purchased by Health Equity. And then our supplemental insurance products are provided by Aflac, and we'll go through them all, but they're listed there as well. And that wraps up everything.
Thank you, Mr. Noble, appreciate it very much. You want to stay up there in case anybody has any questions? Appreciate that, thanks. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Noble? Hearing and seeing none, this is a motion item that will go on to the special board meeting later on, and Mr. Miller, I see your motion, second, Mrs. Wilt, any discussion?
Just thank you very much for the work that you did.
Thank you.
Hearing and seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And this moves on to the meeting after this one, the special board meeting, Ms. Ramos.
Mr. Theo, it'd be okay, I'd also like to recognize Donnie, he's done a lot of work in the benefits department. He's gotten a lot of phone calls, and he's been here doing open enrollment tirelessly, so thank you, Donnie.
Onto item number six, the video surveillance server storage expansion, Mr. Risticizian.
Thank you, I'm actually going to yield my time to Ms. Sailor, she's going to go over the remaining items on the agenda.
Do we want to take all these together, or do we want to do them individually? Items six through 10, they're all IT-related items. Anybody, we take those together, you good with that? We're good, okay, we'll take them as one motion, so if you want to cover all them, feel free.
Sure, I'm requesting the board's approval to purchase the Dell Power Scale. We need this in order that we can expand the video storage surveillance capabilities here at the district. The cost is $813,356.17. The next one is a request for the board's approval to purchase Dell EMC AppSync for infrastructural improvements. And this provides the district with the opportunity or the ability to copy large data sets and to store them. It also forces our ability to have the ability to have some disaster recovery services as well as any repurposing of any data and that are historical data sets within the district. The next is the email migration to the cloud. As you know, we have expanded email from our staff members on to all of our students. And so storage in the cloud allows the district to have the ability to store email correspondence as well as the district's Office 365 services. The video surveillance server upgrade is a software purchase request because we need the ability to actually take the surveillance data platforms that we're utilizing and make sure that we have an endpoint security component associated with them. The last is the CrowdStrike Endpoint Protection Response Capability. And this is our ability to respond to any potential threats, detect them in anticipation of any future, as well as conduct any forensics associated with those threats. This also helps us to safeguard against any potential additional cybersecurity or breach breaches that this, that are, the district may experience.
Thank you, Ms. Sailor, any questions, my colleagues? I was a little bit confused, Ms. Sailor, between item H and I. Only because it seemed, I was looking at those earlier, and H looks like professional services and E-plus technologies to do the migration for Microsoft Office 365, am I correct in that?
That is correct, professional services for E-plus technologies to help us facilitate the email migration to the cloud.
And then I was looking at I, and I was a little bit confused because it said the request of board's approval to purchase the VMware vSphere Enterprise Plus, and it said current video surveillance server and protect large data. And then I looked at the supporting document, and that's where I got confused.
So the supporting document is inadvertently in the copying. So it's here, they just got switched. So the email migration to the cloud memo is inadvertently attached to the VMware.
So H and I were switched, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Bear with me one second, sorry. Okay, and so then I is for both video surveillance and the the, so when I, when I, under the what is it question, I saw the Act of Directory Federation Services, right?
Right.
And I'm reading the description, I lost how how to do the video surveillance given, and I guess my question is, we're talking about video surveillance in this other server, and I just wanted to clarify.
So the, so the VMware vSphere provides us with, it's a multifaceted coverage support. It's going to provide us with the ability to protect the video surveillance, but it also allows us to protect large data sets that are connected to our email, which is managed by ADFS. Because we currently utilize VMware as well.
Okay.
For that purpose.
All right, I'm not going to drill into the details more because I see hardware on that as well as the servers, not just the services. So that's fine, I just wanted to make sure the documents were clear on that.
My apologies for the mix-up.
And just, just one more comment that I made earlier on the other very large IT purchase, right? I mean, these all cumulative, I think I looked at earlier today, it was like 1. something, I forget, it was 1 million. Thank you. Just to make sure it goes through the right purchasing process that, you know, we have a purchasing department. So when I see big numbers like this, obviously, I think it's very beneficial to do that, so appreciate that. So, so this is a motion item, once anybody has any more questions? Anyone? Ms. Matheson, is that a motion? Yep, the whole group? Yep. And a second, Mrs. Wilt, any discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And this moves on to the board meeting at the end of the month, thank you, Ms. Sailor.
Thank you.
And monthly reporting budget, we'll have that later towards the end of the month. Is there any comments in the public on non-agenda items? Still no cards. Any old business, my colleagues? Any new business or gas catch items? I do want to just request, and Dr. Stanford and I had this conversation earlier today, but just just publicly, because I think it's important. You know, we're talking about petabytes of storage for video surveillance and a lot of technology. And obviously, I don't want to have a conversation about security technology and security programming here in public, but I think it's important that technology doesn't drive the program, but the program drives technology, right? And I think it's just, it's been kind of been my. Been kind of been my professional life, and I just want to make sure that statement. That you in the conversation you and I had that that gets through to the administration that. That, you know, we. We use technology to support what's the mission of the organization, the operation, whether it's security, whether it's educational, whether it's just the business of running things. And it's just something I think is very important that we do here.
Absolutely agree.
Thank you. So moved. There's a second, all in favor? And thank you very much for the business committee, the whole meeting.
All right.
Mrs. Will.
That brings us to our special board meeting. I'd like to call to order the special board meeting for the Board of Directors for the School District for the City of Allentown for today, June ninth, twenty twenty two. The board does welcome public comment. You all know the procedure. Can we please have the roll call?
Ms. Brown. Ms. Conover. Ms. Harris. Ms. Matheson. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Ortiz.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Present.
Mr. Theo.
Here.
Ms. Wilt.
Here.
Seven board members are present.
Thank you very much. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. I was remiss in the my call to order. I was asked to to share that tonight the school board will be formally vote to. To district property, excuse me, property resolutions, Cleveland and McKinley Elementary Schools, the district section one twenty five and a personnel report. I do not have any remarks at this time, Dr. Stanford.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have some short remarks and it's it really, the the remarks are a compliment to. The remarks I made earlier during the Education Committee. When Mr. Theo asked about the curriculum work and. How are we trying to make sure that we have continuity and being able to support? That work and and I mentioned that, you know, one of my. One of the. One of the. Strategies and the plan to move forward would be to have Miss Sawyer. Be the person to be our point person and lead with that curriculum work going going forward and. Wanted to share with the board and the community. That under. The personnel item on the agenda, the item. Number, I'm sorry, section five, item A in the personnel. Agenda, you will see the Director of Literacy position. Which was implicitly approved as a part of the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two fiscal year budget last summer. To begin the process of rebuilding the district's capacity to create an aligned, written. Taught and assessed curriculum that will drive academic improvement in the district. The the work of this position will drive this important work of designing new reading and writing curriculum. That was presented as a part of the presentation earlier this evening. And 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 want to also just note. That this curriculum work was was. A major part of the curriculum audit that was done by Phi Delta Kappa in two thousand and eighteen. And so this position will also drive the work to create supplemental material. And introducing best practice teaching strategies to support teachers in the classroom and to work with our students. On a consistent basis. And so the administration is presenting this position this evening. For ratification by the board as salary range three in the Act ninety three agreement, which was adopted on September the twenty third, two, twenty twenty one. And so just wanted to bring that to the the board's attention and. Make sure that we are aware that this is another step in that effort. To complete the curriculum work that was presented to us earlier this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Dr. Stanford. Um, Secretary, any? Nope. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the director's report. Mr. Theo, is there a second? Is Ms. Matheson, is there any discussion? Being hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Matheson. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer. Mr. Theo. Mrs. Wilt.
Yes.
Ms. Brown. Ms. Harris. Seven zero motion passes.
May I have a motion for the approval of the Ms. Ms. Matheson has made a motion to approve their personnel report. Is there a second? Mr. Theo. Any discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Palmer. Mr. Theo. Mrs. Wilt.
Yes.
Mrs. Brown. Mrs. Matheson. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Seven zero motion passes.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of the finance report? Mr. Theo, is there a second? Ms. Brown, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Theo. Ms. Wilt.
Yes.
Ms. Brown. Ms. Matheson. Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Seven zero motion passes.
Thank you. Any non agenda item? Okay, is there any old business to come before the board?
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So on the motion for divesting of the two properties, Dr. Stanford, could you describe to us the processes that we could take as a board for these two assets to divest?
Two, I'm sorry, Madam Chairwoman, to Mr. Miller. Yes, the the state law provides a number of different. Avenues for disposal of district property. Once the board has determined that property is unusable and unnecessary for district use. Quick example of some of those, there could be a public auction, there could be a private auction, there could be a direct sale of the property. And there could also be swapping of property with government entities. That might have properties that we might want to. To exchange with. And so the board is going to now have with the passage of this. Of these two resolutions, the board is now going to have to decide with the recommendation and with the information from the administration. Which one of those different options under state law that we would be able to pursue and. I'll also look to Mr. Sotanic to see if I may have misstated anything in that summary.
You have not stated anything. Okay, thank you.
Miller, any other questions? You know, business, any other old business? Any new business? They have a motion to adjourn. Ms. Brown, second by Mr. Theo. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone.